Okay, well, good evening, everybody. Thank you all for being here. We've got a full board in attendance tonight. Appreciate that and appreciate all our visitors. Board members, you have before you an agenda that is proposed for this evening. Anybody have any additions or changes you want to make to that before we approve our agenda? I do want to add one item down under the chairman's report. We probably don't have to make an official note about it, but I do want to bring up just our school's security claims in light of the governor's admonition and just recent events in our country. I think it's always a good time for us to review and reevaluate those. Of course, open for motion that we would approve our agenda.
Signed.
Got a motion?
So, say it.
And a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. Thank you. All right, everyone, if you would please stand for a place, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, board members, you have the minutes for our May 2 regular board meeting that were emailed out to you. The board is open for motion to approve the minutes.
I will make a motion to approve the May 4 minutes.
Okay. You guys second? Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. Thank you. You also had made dispersments that went out in email today. I have to ask again, Ms. Williams, I was looking at our FEMA cash dispersment. Anything back from FEMA?
Not yet, but we submitted, resubmitted, was it Thursday here?
Yes, ma'am, we got confirmation Thursday.
Hopefully it's going to be any day because she was going to do a pre-char round on that resub, so hopefully.
We appreciate it, Williams.
Yes.
Okay, got a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any questions or further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. Great. Thank you very much. And we have a, I think I should recognize Ms. Young at this time for a special presentation.
Yes. I have two people we'd like to recognize today as very special people. My first is Ms. Isabella Mark. Isabella is being recognized through TSBA Student Recognition Award. I had an opportunity to meet Isabella and probably a pretty good conversation with her at the Career Fair the other night. She wants to go to UT Southern and for a math teaching degree.
Anyone get the contract?
And possibly do, her secondary would be ELL. So, I told her when she gets ready to start that, to give me a call and we'll make sure she gets lots of scholarships. Thank you so much. Would you all want a picture or wait till the end?
No, we'll get, just give one out. Because we don't want them, I don't want them to have to stay if they have more to, so.
If you'll go up there with them, they'll make your picture.
So, for the sake of everyone, you know, there are multiple, for the Tennessee School Board Association, they have annual awards and there are, there will be a nominee from each district. We're in the south central Tennessee district and so we're hoping you will be the district nominee because there are nine total that then will determine, compete to be the statewide winner. So, anyway, we have a lot of faith in you and compliments in you, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, guys, are you all ready? All right, you can go on three, one, two, and three. Okay, let me do one more, please. All right, on three, one, two, and three. Okay, we're good, all right.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Isabella.
You will represent us well.
She will, she really will.
I'm sure. I'm just going to study. I'm going to initiate you all.
I'd like to recognize Mr. Jay Witt. Mr. Witt is going to be our volunteer of the year nominee for Fayetteville City Schools. Whenever I talk to the teachers that he helps a lot, I received a lot of, there's not anything he won't do for us. He's always here, he takes kids home, he helps with plays, he helps with clubs. If I say I need something, Mr. Witt, make sure I get it. And he does all that with triplets. And whenever they told me he had triplets, I said, oh, how does he even get them off to school? So, because multiples always scared me. But, Mr. Witt, thank you so much for your volunteerism to our school. If Mr. Witt wins, there will be a thousand dollar gift coming to the school. And so, we hope that you'll move down through the process as well. And I know that you'll be willing to share that with the school, right?
I hope. I didn't know I had a choice.
Well, as you can see, I know Jay also from Main Streets, my wife's on the board with him, so I do get to see him volunteer work with them. And he is a handsome man.
Children wanted to be with him tonight, so they're here.
He is a lot here, so, you know. And he's got to leave because I like to be the most handsome volunteer in the world. Get out of here.
You need four seats.
Okay, guys, are you all ready? Okay, on three, one, two, and three. Okay, let me do one more. All right, on three, one, two, and three. Okay, thank you.
Well, we know you're awesome. Thank you for everything you did for the school. Mr. Witt and I go back a few years. We worked at the same center in Huntsville for a number of years. And so, I've known him professionally and it's really, really fun to see.
You're waiting for me to retire.
But, but it's wonderful to, the respect I have for him professionally and then to see what he personally pours into this school system is very hard work, so we appreciate you. Thank you. And the same there, there will be a volunteer named out of the nine districts.
Thank you so much.
Come on, get on.
Congratulations.
All right, hey, good evening. We're going to welcome our new city administrator.
Hello, everybody.
Has everybody met, Kevin?
Yeah, did anybody?
Okay, would you mind introducing yourself? I ain't put you on the spot here, but.
I should have come a little later, but. Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Kevin Owens. I'm the new city administrator, now two and a half months, so not so new, but good to see you all. Our first board meeting, so looking forward to working with you all.
That's awesome. Well, we appreciate all the support.
Thank you.
And he is very gracious to me. We could spend a lot of time down there aggravating each other. We know a lot of things. That's awesome. Appreciate that. Okay, excited about those nominees. Principals' reports, this one next.
Good evening from summertime. And we are talking about things that are awesome during the summer and one thing is summer school. Now, I can't say I've never seen a more awesome summer school than Fayetteville City Summer Schools. And there are 110 students, we have 10 teachers, two EAs, two interventionists. And we're going into our second week. Our days of operation are Tuesday through Friday instead of the typical Monday through Thursday. And so, last Friday, they made ice cream with Ms. Shannon Smith. She's the string teacher, so they learned about engineering and science. And we have three more weeks of summer school. They are, they're amazing. I cannot wait to spray them with, well, I'm not going to spray them, but to see them get sprayed with a fire truck. I'll be to the side. But, and let's see. And I do want to congratulate my colleagues for making Beacon status. We may be cross our fingers on the way to Lighthouse as soon as we get those test results. And last thing, but certainly not least, I have a new assistant principal. I'm remarried.
Stand up.
Stand up. And his name is Michael Bobbitt, so I'll let my new spouse introduce himself.
Y'all know I'm Michael Bobbitt, coming from the middle school where I was teaching with Ms. Tricia. It was an awesome experience. I've been bringing 27 years, right there, 27 years of education experience, well over, altogether, well over about nine years administrative, either as athletic director, assistant principal, and/or both when I was at Decatur. So, it's, I look forward to it, look forward, and I loved my first year here in Fayetteville City. Middle school was awesome and I can't wait to get, get busy with the young ones at Ralph Askins. I appreciate y'all.
And your wife?
And my wife, yes, my wife is the counselor at the middle school.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't tell them.
Okay.
And she does an amazing job. She's a lot better than I am. But she does, she works very hard. She loves, she's been doing that for 30-plus years, so she's, so I can, I can say I bring a, I bring a lot of experience to the table and I hope, hope to use it and, and boost us even further down the road.
Yeah, we're very excited.
I appreciate y'all.
Better be more valuable, continuation part.
Yes, yes, I appreciate it. Thank you so much. Thank you all.
That's super. Thank you. Ms. Jean?
I like when the kids do this.
We do too.
We're going to miss Mr. Bobbitt. He did a fantastic job this year, came out of the special ed room to the CDC room and fit right in with those kiddos. But I know he's going to be helping many more kids than, than our group, so, but he will do fantastic. So, our summer school, we do not have as many eager beavers as the elementary school, but we are averaging about 45 to 50 students each day. We started out with more than that. This week, we'll be calling them when they come back tomorrow to kind of get those numbers back up, we hope. Originally, we had 70 enrolled and then they just kind of start when parents find out they don't have to come. We've got several calls, but we are average 45 or 50. Ms. Baker is leading that, doing a great job with the teachers. They have planned many activities. They've had Glow Day already. They made slime and smoothies, learning about fractions. It's really neat to see all this hands-on learning. They're going to do an egg drop competition, they're going to have Water Day, Tata Day, and, you know, daily, they're really working on math skills and reading skills and they get a good time each day with Coach Cadizon Townsend. So, they've enjoyed going to him for PE and learning some PE skills. I want to give a shout out to Ms. Stephanie from Alfaskins in the cafeteria. The lunches are fantastic. I mean, they are from chicken and dumplings to, I mean, these kids are eating every bite. So, I don't know what she's doing, but the food has, I mean, you walk into the cafeteria and so she, I shout out to whoever's helping with Ms. Stephanie with that.
Mr. Jones, you and I need to go do the evaluation.
It's really, really good. Our Beta Club, Junior Beta Club was meeting just this evening. When I left, they will be attending the national convention in Nashville at the Opera Land Hotel on June the 27th and the 28th. So, we look forward to seeing what they come home with because they always do really well. So, they were planning a lot of those competitions, leave outside the box and different things that they'll be presenting there. And we are honored to be recognized as the Blue Ribbon Beacon School. I have to say, our FMS staff has worked so diligently this year fulfilling just the many needs of our students. And never before have we really looked at the needs as in-depth as we did this year. And we did that by doing parent surveys and we had a large turnout of parent surveys, getting them in there, filling out surveys. We had student surveys, we had teacher and, you know, staff surveys, them telling us what do the parents need, what do the students need, what does our staff need. So, just some of the things that we implemented off of their feedback. We had a parent advisory board, also a student advisory board. That's never been really priority within the building and that's been a huge amount of good feedback, you know, what are the students liking, what are they not liking, as well as parents. We have 12 different clubs that the teachers did all on their own and that was based off of surveys from kids. What clubs do you want? What are you interested in? This is just all after school. It brought in kids that are not athletic, that, you know, they want to do, they want to cook, you know, they want to, there was a girls' club, a strive-to-be. We're looking at adding a boys' club next year, so we know other things that we want to add. We had two parent nights that we've never had before. We did our fall, our winter fest where we did the bingo and chili supper and then we had Are You Smarter Than a Middle Schooler in April, which was a lot of fun. Weekly emails, the parents are saying, oh, not enough communication, we don't know what's going on. So, weekly emails telling the games, telling what's upcoming events. Our grade levels also use Remind to send out just grade level information. We recognize student, teacher, and staff of the month. Our FMS morning show, which is absolutely wonderful, just completely student-led, completely. They do a great job with that and all the announcements and just, it's a great way for them to take responsibility and grow.
Didn't Blue Ribbon say that even last year, when you did make Beacon status, that the morning show was one of the best things they ever seen?
Yes, yes. And it's even better because that was at the very beginning. They came in right at the beginning of the year where we had just really started that whole program. And now, it's just like, here's the script, you know, I type in a few things and then the kids are responsible for birth dates, for sports. They go to the coaches, they fill in the sports, you know, all I'm doing is the announcements I need for them to know. They do, they do a positive thought for the day, they look it up, they do a joke of the day. We even added in a weatherman this year, you know, toward the end of the school year. So, but that was, so we've added that. We really worked on our strategic discipline plan as well as a reward plan. We did nine-weeks assessments that allowed the teachers to, to look at where the students are academically and drive their instruction purposely. And then, teachers did data worksheets off of that to see where the kids were and just that really helped with instruction. All this came from the teachers and the staff. We even had EAs doing clubs in the afternoons. It wasn't just teachers, it was, it was EAs. They just worked really hard to build those relationships with those kids and then work on the academic success as well. So, I look very forward to even more things next year. And I'm very pleased that our school earned that award, so.
Congratulations, Karen. That's great. Can you use a guest is here for Mr. McCormick?
Yes, sir. Thank you all for letting me be here. Mr. McCormick is headed out to the wilderness in Alaska, so he let me fill in for him today.
Is he going where Mr. Jones was last year?
I'm not sure.
Not exactly. They're cruising a little south of where we were, but we've got tired of where to go.
He was super excited about it, so I'm sure they'll have a great time. But I'll kind of piggyback on Ms. Jean. Fayetteville High School was upgraded to Beacon status. We found out there towards the end of the year. We used the data and their, and the survey results kind of as our guide as to what to focus on. A couple of key areas that we looked at were the technology and the parent education. We hit some of those marks with the interactive whiteboards. Kids have worn those things out, groups, working, you know, group projects, teachers using it. It's such a cool thing. We also have Doug Eaton, the tech consultant that's in the building all the time. He makes the technology simple. Like, I'm not great with technology and he can explain it to me real fast and real simple and he does it, he, you know, helps the teachers out, he'll work with the kids, he'll send emails and stuff to us and just have technology-driven stuff that the kids can do that's fun and they're learning. So, it's really good. We also had done a few things we hadn't done before as far as the parent education. We did the junior nod to help the upcoming seniors get ready to graduate. Now, here's what you need to know, here's what you got to get ready for because there's a ton of stuff that comes at you fast. And so, all of that was, was pretty successful and we'll continue with that. I'll have to brag on Ms. Whiteneck, the, the summer school. My, my son loves it at Askins. He, you know, he's a typical seven-year-old, no, Dad, I don't want to go, I don't want to go, but when he goes, he has an absolute ball. He did the same thing last year. Absolutely loves it, has fun, learns stuff, doesn't even realize he's learning stuff. So, all that's been great. At the high school, we're doing our summer school, which is more of a credit recovery. We do it eight to 12, Monday through Thursday. We had 15 confirmed enrollments, of which I think four have already finished. I had one finish today. This is for students, so they don't get behind on graduation. So, they are going to be, you know, where they messed up in a class, they take it as seriously as they need to. This way, they get in, they get their time, they cover their content, they hit all their Tennessee standards and they can get credit for that and not have to retake the class next year. So, like I said, we've already had four, we had one finish today, had four finished. We've got several more that should finish this week and I think hopefully, if we keep pushing them, hopefully all of them will, will finish by the end of next week. So, that'll be a great thing. Huge thanks to the cafeteria staff. They feed our kids on the breakfast in the mornings and it's been great. Kids love it. Honey buns, muffins, I mean, good stuff and they bring a lot, so the kids, they, they really enjoy that for sure. Other things going on with us, we'll have senior pictures in FHS Commons, June 21st to July 19th. I think that stuff is went out now on the socials. The kids should have got an email to get their date and time scheduled. If not, they'll schedule one for you. Ms. Parker was there today. She was working on some of that, getting it ready. And then, our picture provider this year is Interstate Photography. At the end of the year, we celebrated a couple of different things. Number one being the Beacon status. We'd like to thank Dr. Stiles. She provided cupcakes. That was a big hit and we had, we had the blue cupcake, so we all enjoyed that for sure. Then we, they celebrated two retirements. Mr. Don Adams, who was our band director, and Ms. Dana Morrison, who I think has done a little bit of everything around the high school. We want to extend our many thanks for their years of hard work and their dedication to Fayetteville City Schools. Don is going to look forward to working on his farm and being at the farmer's market. He loves to do that stuff. And Ms. Dana is going to get to spend a lot of time with her, her grandbabies, so I know she's, she's going to enjoy that and that'll be great.
Yeah, I seen Don and his wife for Friday. I told him I was telling everybody how bad his stuff was, maybe he could starve and have to come back to work.
Yeah, yeah. Not a bad idea, yeah. Don's great. He's a super good dude.
Something that I'm going to give a shout out to high school and Ms. Dodson that we did that helped our eighth graders. Our eighth graders were able to go over during the period to visit with the CTE classes, am I saying that right? Like, they spent a time with Ag, Criminal Justice, name them all. So, you know, lots of times at the end of eighth grade, when they go to fill out their requests, they're like, I don't know what my focus area is, I don't know what I want to do. So, you know, cosmetology, so she scheduled, I know Michelle helped carry some back and forth sometimes, but those teachers took their time and welcomed our kids. So, they got exposed to every focus area to know, you know, what they were interested in as they go into high school, which was a, I think, a really great thing for these guys to help set that up, so.
Yeah, definitely.
All right. Supervisor's report, Ms. Jones.
I very much enjoyed getting to see the building level administration present after doing that for a number of years. It was nice. It's changed since the times when I was sitting in the seat doing that, but they did a great job. That was fun. Obviously, one of the first things I want to talk about is our FEMA Dome project. We had our bids come in. We had our bid come in, is the appropriate way to say that. Obviously, with one single qualified bid, they want us to rebid, which will delay the process by a month, six weeks, something like that. What we will do, assuming everyone approves of the idea, we will go forward, probably submit ads to go into the papers beginning next week. They'll advertise for two weeks. We will see how much interest is generated, if we need to do another pre-bid meeting, we'll be happy to do that. And then, we'll have the bids at the earliest possible date. That being said, if we have a single bid again, we will have the option at that point to go through a process for single source. I'm not familiar with that, only to know that it is a process. I can't really give you a timeline if that were the case, but I do know that we have had a number of companies who were interested in the past and all got busy during the process of delay with the fire marshals, who are intrigued to potentially bid. I can't say that that'll generate more bids, but it is possibility. I know one in particular is communicating with us, who we anticipated a bid from, but they weren't able to due to other obligations. The renovation of the back of the gym, I believe at this point, that is an escher, is, I believe our plan is to potentially rebid that in, in its total form, along with an alternate for just a segment of that that would be more in line with what budget predictions would be. That's where I believe that project and those bids and the planning is at this point. To put a fine point on the reimbursement, I'm looking at an email with the letter that has been sent. Out of a total of $506,806.04 of FEMA-eligible expenditures to this point, we request, based on documentation, reimbursements in the order in amount of $379,806.03. So, when this comes through, that'll be the size of the check that we get, hopefully sooner rather than later.
You'll be fully responsible.
Well, I'll take responsibility for that, but, and I know there's probably a number of questions I'll be having, anything, if there aren't.
Yeah, just more frustrating delays, right?
Yeah, I mean, that's what it amounts to.
Like I said, in 12 years as a superintendent, 13, and built lots of stuff, I've never seen the delays in the stuff that we're seeing right now in construction.
Yeah.
And just the price of it, it's, the people keep telling me it's unprecedented.
Hopefully, hopefully, you know, in a month, we'll be able to come in with a bid that is within our budget and then this will not seem that substantive. Hopefully, that'll be the case. The price issues are another concern, but hopefully, we won't have to cross that bridge.
How much of a delay has it been?
The, the fire marshals, state fire marshal's office delayed us about four months and added over $100,000 to the project by our initial calculations.
We had a project that laid over four years.
Whoop.
That rode.
Was it?
Over four years and the cost just kept going up and up.
Yeah, and that's what's, the cost was actual initial cost. I'm not, and I'm not calculating the cost in, you know, inflationary costs, which is, you know, I don't really know how to appropriately calculate that, but I assure you, there has been some, so. Thank you all.
Thank you. Hang in there.
Oh, yes, sir. Hey, it's inevitably going to be successful.
That is right. That is right. We are determined.
So, specifically to address something that you guys brought up, we have been discussing our professional development and we have actually set up on that Tuesday, from 8:30 to 10:30, our professional development presenter to the entire school system will be represented from Homeland Security. So, he will be presenting for a period of two hours and we will be specifically addressing building access and procedure and that was also something that we discussed this morning in our meeting. So, we, please know that that's something that's been considered on the front burner and we've already embedded that into PD. So, to know that I was really disappointed, I get very invested in grants, if you don't know. We did not get the $200,000 welding grant, but that's okay, you know, it was a big thing to get the two biggest ones in the state back to back. But, we are, I'm sure you've seen, the governor is investing in CTE, so we are going to be getting a million dollars over four years for the high school and $500,000 over four years for the middle school. The details have not been fleshed out as far as specifically what that could be spent on. I shared with Mr. Hopkins, what I would love to do is utilize those funds to go ahead and jump-start that welding program collaboratively with Moore County, Lincoln County, and Franklin County to access for Huntland because, like I said, you know, Frankie's willing to give us a piece of their building. They'll, they'll give us a room and pay the electric bill and pay everything to actually put it there. And the beauty of it is, as I've explained before, it's like the industrial maintenance, which we think has been incredibly successful for our system and the community, is it then becomes self-sustaining. Once we get it off the ground. Once we get it off the ground, the enrollment of the students will then generate it itself, the TCAT takes it over, it becomes self-sustainable, and those are expenses we don't incur, while still giving our students another program of study, and then creating seats or opportunities for individuals within our community. So, for adults to take those that are left, so it's a great long-term investment. So those are kind of the things we're talking about. Had a great meeting with Dr. Laura Monks and Dr. Cheatham at the University of Tennessee Southern. Some of the things we've talked about, really working on doing a transition between a TCAT LPN into a nursing at UT Southern. I feel really good about the conversation. UT Southern is wanting to create a program where a student could actually come into it and then split. You could go nursing, or they're creating a major that's going to be a health professional lane, that would be more of a management type lane for the students that enter into it, which could be great, and also talked about other courses, all of their cybersecurity courses are online. She was telling me specifically her professors, which could then open the door to some true dual enrollments within the cybersecurity that our students could potentially do. And you guys know, we had a really successful program, but it's just hard to compete with Huntsville. Once we get those people trained up, we're going to lose them. So, other things we're focusing on are in-house dual enrollments, like we did with Motlow. To let you know too, you've probably been reading about the fact, the state is now going to pay for five EPSOs, that's five early post-secondary courses. In the past, they only paid for two, and Motlow did the four pack, but, and it also can start when you're in ninth grade. So we're hoping to set it up with the, with everything, industrial maintenance, Motlow, the UT Southern that we could potentially do, where a large number of our students would access all five by the time they graduate, which would make them ready graduates. So, also, Mr. Giffen is sick, so I wanted to share with you guys, I told them you had requested enrollment numbers. So, this actually breaks it down, not just by school, but it also breaks it down by grade level. Please know that those numbers are as of when we got out of school, they're not reflective of next year's enrollments. They are into the school. So, if you had some questions about those, that would be as of when school got out.
It's quite a turn when you see the bigger numbers at the high school level, right? That's, I remember the early days when we were getting that high school started.
And also remember, next year, we'll have that fifth grade, it'll be another bump down as far as RAS, and it'll be all that plus a fifth grade, so that is just something to note.
And the high school's going to get big, because if you also look, Chris, Mr. Jones and I have been talking about this three or four years back, we kept talking about the fact that eventually it would happen. You've got a ninth grade class rolling in a 110, you've got a 12th grade class rolling out of 83. So in reality, that student population is going to increase by about 30 students. So, you know, we knew those bigger classes were coming.
And what I'm really excited about is, we all know, in education, while the middle school tends to be a troubled area, you know, and so now we're able to really going to concentrate on that, six, seven, and eight. I mean, that's going to be huge for us academically and socially, because that is kind of where students, you know, the separation.
And sort of a little bit of teaser, that 500,000 is going to allow us, you know, we have a great proximity, and it has to be spent on CTE. So, you know, we had talked about some ideas of, you know, potentially, we could maybe do a computer science class there, that you take in eighth grade, then you could go into cybersecurity, you could go into media class, you could go into, you could diverge, and then everybody could still be computer science savvy, or whatever. They could go into any, if we can get them computer savvy, the transference of that skill is everywhere.
I could get on my site box about human consumer science, but I won't, this moment.
Anytime you get ready.
I'll save it for another meeting.
Those hit just for me.
If it's offered, it's in the mix, right? If it's a program that's available.
The biggest challenge you have, because I was kind of wondering if it was, you know, the question of the statement aspect of it, the biggest challenge you face in anything is dual enrollments and credentials and certifications. And for example, I'm super excited, they just sent me the copies of the credentials, the NCRC test that our students took. They were gold, they were, you know, platinum, they were that, well, guess what, you know, when they do that, that gives the student a credential. So not just for the ready graduate now, but we now can upload that credential, and that counts the same as an EPO, not to mention all those kids that we've got now that are, goodness, working at Toyota, that are going to make so much more money than myself and some of the rest of us at 22 years old. But that's kind of the challenge that you get into with the family and consumer science, I mean, and you know that, we've talked about that, that's always what's limited.
Personnel generated, you know, obviously, high schools, as I mentioned before, some were very good, some were not, it really had more to do with, you hire the right person, it does very well. You hire the wrong person, it doesn't do very well, and I don't care what, that is the number one variable, you have to have, you need a rock star.
And I've told you before, we have to be cautious in a small school system of parasiting our own programs. And again, something Mr. Jones and I talked about years ago, when I worked for the State Department and the high school was built, and fiscally, being fiscally wise, and Lisa loves it when I say, hey, I got a dual enrollment where we don't have to pay the teacher, we don't have to, there's no expense to the system, but we have an opportunity for the student. So those are, that's kind of how we expand our programs, is by the.
Since that is now its own career path, that, do they, do they have dual enrollment at other schools with teaching as a profession?
That's the one they have, now, I don't know if UT Southern, Cindy would speak to that, I know they've talked about it.
That seems like that might be the outlet. I mean, there's other skills, obviously, within that, it's not teaching as a profession, but there's pre-courses to that.
And we have really, really, to brag on Brandy Thompson, we have, we have increased our work-based learning percentage-wise more than any other school system in the state. I feel 100% confident of that, because we basically went from zero to, I mean, we got 60 kids that were in some aspect of work-based learning, whether it be at the Ralph Askins level, or actually going out to work. So that's another linkage of the workforce development. Do you guys have any questions for me?
I don't, thanks.
All right, thank you.
Great, we're all, thank you.
And I think Mr. Giffen's out, and Ms. Tipton is out, so Dr. Stomp.
I've got something. I do want to brag on Regina, because I've been able to see it firsthand, she took me down to the career tech, or to the industrial maintenance area, and those boys were so proud to be able to show off what they're doing. And then I got to watch two of my faves walk across the stage, and I might get a little teary-eyed, but it was that program that changed them, because they spent a lot of time in my office at the middle school. And now I watch them walk across, and they're so, and they have, there's purpose, and they're going to be successful, and that makes me very happy. Also want to brag on our schools and what's taking place, I mean, to achieve Beacon status is huge, and they have worked so hard, and I was able to, and I think Mr. Hopkins was with us too, walk through a lot of the classrooms with the assessor, and it was just, you know, because I, this was at the middle school, and I remember being at the middle school, and, you know, a lot of great things were happening, but it is just transformed. It was really, the classrooms were electric, there was a lot of movement and inquiry and excitement, and so I'm proud of what our schools are doing toward that, and they're really looking at those surveys and making positive changes. So, speaking of surveys, we, we've surveyed teachers, we've surveyed our principals and our parents to see how can we best spend our money. So, we receive a lot of federal dollars, and instead of going through every little piece with you, we put it in a manila envelope for you, so that you can, you can kind of slide through, and we've placed dividers for each big area where we spend chunks of money, and then I highlight it at the top where that money comes from. But you can just see, I'm not going to go through all of this, but just Title I alone, $374,000 is put into teacher salaries, interventionist, not, these are teachers that really work with the kids on those reading and math skills to help close the gap. So, we feel like some of the best ways to spend money is just that human interaction, rather than it just being a computer, it is face-to-face, small group instruction, and we can.
We did add a math intervention initiative at the elementary school.
Ralph Askins, that's right.
So, kind of, we didn't like, kind of explain that, last year we did reading.
Right, a reading coach, yes.
We benefited from that, we sent it to the level, so we're now going to do the same thing with math.
Yes, yes. So I think we're going to see some positive changes to our performance as well, so I see great things taking place, but I just wanted you to see each area where we spend funds, and then we copied the areas where we have to justify everything, so it kind of gives a little more detail in the narrative descriptive as to what that money goes toward. So, we were able to get everything approved from the state level for our consolidated plan, so now we're just asking for approval from the board for how we've spent the money. And it's divided into several categories, you have Title I, Title V, ELL, IDEA preschool, and then IDEA special ed, so all of that's included in that. And if you have any questions, just don't hesitate to ask, reach out to me, and I'll be happy to answer anything, as well as Christine.
So we do need to approve your approval.
Yes, yes.
Any questions, right, as we're sitting here, it sounds like something also that we'll probably might have follow-up questions.
Sure.
As we digest more and more.
Sure. And there's not, what we spent money on last year, it pretty much follows the same sequence, maybe a different curriculum was added, or maybe a training was added, but not much of a difference, except for the math coach that we put in there. All right, thank you, guys.
Great presentations, so that we can find the different areas. So the floor is open for a motion, if we approve the consolidated federal budget. Got a motion? Second, any further discussion?
All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed, say no. Thank you.
And I'm going to be short and sweet, I've already been able to recognize two very special people tonight, which was outstanding. Just let you know, we have been approved for three pre-cas for next year, as we have in the past, the grant has been approved, it's loaded in ePlan, I've just got to get the budget submitted as soon as we have the third teacher that will be in those classrooms. I want to talk a little bit about our 21st century after-school program. COVID hit us hard, we had about 10 kids on a regular day. This year, Mr. Hobbs and his staff have had 65 to 70 kids every afternoon in that after-school program. I just want to brag on him and give him acclimates for, you know, one of the things when I started after-school many years ago, one of the guys at the State Department said, if you have a good program, it grows itself. And so, to go from 20 kids a couple of years ago to 60, to 65 kids every afternoon, it says they're having a good time, or they wouldn't be there. So just kudos to our after-school staff, and those people work all day, and then come in and they stay late. So I have great people there, and just want to brag just for a moment on the summer school staff. We have a full staff at both schools, and the cafeteria is providing our breakfast and lunch at the middle school, elementary school, and then breakfast at the high school. You've already heard a lot of that, but just to recognize those folks behind the, getting those jobs done. Takes a lot of work and a lot of extra effort to show up in the summer. I said, that really tells me who loves kids, whenever they're willing to come and spend their summers with us, so if you have any questions? Thank you, bud.
That's great, thank you. Okay, Ms. Williams.
I have a couple of others. First one was the salary scale for 22, 23, with a 2% increase, it's going to be 2% per case. And then also, along with that, is the system-wide salary scheduling. And then support staff, and in the support staff, we are asking to move our subpay from certified from $65 to $85, and the non-certified from $60 to $80 per day. And our bus drivers' substitutes is still at the $50 rate.
Finding substitutes is very difficult, and, you know, we've gotten to the point where it just really wasn't worth the time, so we're doing that to be more competitive with the other surrounding systems. One thing that I did want to make note for our salary schedule for all employees, is that right now, our salary schedule ends at how many years experience?
25.
25. It is our intent, and I'd like for the board's intent, some one time, to move that to 30 years. I think that that, we've talked about that in staff meetings, that some of our most important employees, and I think it would be a great way to do it, we're really not physically able to do it right now, but I think that is a goal that we've looked at, and I know Lisa and I have discussed that numerous times, but I want you all to be aware, and kind of on the record, to know that we're looking at adding it to, putting a 30-year bump, really, a 27 and then a 30-year bump in our salary schedule. I think that that's when our, some of our employees are most beneficial, and, you know, that's our best employee, I mean, you know, if they're not burned out, you've got somebody with 27, 30 years experience, that's a quality individual, with the most knowledge you've ever been.
Okay. So, the floor would be open for a motion, we approve the salary scales, really for the professional and all of the schedule, new salary scales for 22, 23.
No more.
Motion?
Second.
And a second, any questions or comments about those? All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed, say no. Great, thank you.
And the next item is the approval of the supplement list that's available to the schools, and it's Ralph Askins and Fayette Middle School, and I do need to make a change on the Fayette High School, for the care of baseball fields, not technically baseball field, it's just care of fields, and it's under the FHS, FHS baseball supplement line that is care of multiple fields.
So we're going to move that to?
Standalone.
Same, same dollar, right?
Yes, yes.
But it's really baseball, softball, soccer, football.
Care of all the fields.
It's just care of athletic fields.
Athletic fields, that's great. Just ask for your approval on this supplement.
Okay, floor would be open for a motion, we approve the supplement lists for all three schools for the next school year. Got a motion?
Second.
Second, any questions? All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed, say no. Okay.
And we will supply a list of names as school starts next year, we're still adding some of those, I know that you don't really have to approve them, but as a, no, I will supply those, but they're not all fielded right now, is one thing, and that stuff changes.
Uh, committee reports, facilities, transportation, anything to add, Mr. Jones?
No further report, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, all right. Good, well, I had a couple of things, of course, we had a work session, can't remember the date, but we, you all remember, we were all here. We had a photograph, and then we had a work session, and it was to do Mr. Hopkins' annual performance evaluation, and so I wanted to report first the results of that, so that it can be in the minutes of this meeting as well. We have an evaluation instrument that we had selected sometime, some months before, and he gave us his inputs, we scored everything on a scale of one through, I guess zero through five, could, officially, it could be a zero, right? Zero to five, the five being the maximum score on any of the, any of the standards, one. One. It's just mathematics.
It's a tab, yeah.
And so I'm, I can report that the overall average score across all of the evaluation instrument was 4.997. So I don't think you're in danger of any zeros on this, which is as near perfect a score as I can recall on this board. So a great year by everyone's account. I'd offer the opportunity if any of the board members wanted to make any comments, and we did at the work session. If you wanted to make any comments tonight, certainly now would be an appropriate time. But I think the, an average score of 4.997 out of five says a lot about the sentiment of the board, that. Anybody had any comments? And if not, we'll, if not, we'll move on. Things have already been said at the work session and there were lots of good comments there. We appreciate you very much, Mr. Hopkins. As a result of that, I have a couple of business matters tonight in a, you should have a hard copy on your, in the folder that has the superintendent's employment contract. There are things that are in red and if it's in red, it's changed from the existing contract. And so the employment contract begins one in July of this year, the new proposed contract, if this board chooses to approve it. I thought we'd quickly run through the changes. This, this contract would take effect one July 2022. The term of it is set based on the minutes of this meeting, which is being held on the sixth day of June 2022. And the contract would commence one July 2022 and end on 30 June of 2026. Turns out four years is the maximum length of a contract allowed for, in the state of Tennessee for a school superintendent. Under duties, I did make a couple of changes there that we did not discuss. I don't think we discussed this at the work session, mostly because historically, if you looked at the old contract or the existing current contract, there was an Exhibit A. And I mentioned at the work session, there's some language in there that seemed kind of cumbersome in terms, I wasn't even sure what they meant. And as it turns out, we have a policy 5.802, which gives the duties and responsibilities of the qualifications and duties of the director of schools. Why have an Exhibit A if we already have a policy that states these things? So that's, just, just clean that language up in Section 2, under compensation, setting, resetting the annual base salary. It's $120 effective July 1st. And then we had some specific numbers for health and vision and dental insurance and things in the, at the board level with an employment contract. I'm not too concerned about the dollars and cents of those items. The point is, we're going to provide family coverage of health, vision, and dental insurance, just like we've been doing and have always been in our contracts. And so it seemed best to just let that, the specific numbers go away. You'll flip over in Section 6, under expenses. This board has provided a $600 per month allowance for, in lieu of, in lieu of having to calculate mileage and expenses around in-district transportation. So we have provided $600. I'm asking that we raise that to $800 per month for automobile expenses around, for in-district travel. And the only other, in fact, that, that's the only other change we eliminated, that Exhibit A altogether. So those are the changes I would propose we make to Mr. Hopkins' contract, which would set, set us up for four years of a contract with our director of schools.
Maybe we accept it. They're proposing.
Okay, got a motion?
Second.
Second, any comments? Or did I miss anything that you remember we talked about at the work session that I've forgotten? Okay, if not, then all in favor say aye. Anyone to oppose say no. Great, so we're good with that contract. I would also note that historically, we have provided some level of an annual performance bonus. And I would recommend that we do a $2,000 performance bonus, which is consistent with what we did last year. So if you're, so if you're so inclined to do so.
Make a motion to approve the $2,000 performance bonus.
Okay. Motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Anyone to oppose say no. Great. Okay, we have those matters taken care of. We also have in, in the email that went out, it is warm. Do you mind, do you mind touching it?
Okay, everything.
It's hardly mine.
Everybody's just like, that's my money.
It is quite warm in here and I'm not the one under it being.
They got hot, I'm on it. Dripping.
That's right. So we have, and I think it was, were the Broades and Associates, those were in the email today. Oh, I'm sorry, I jumped, I jumped ahead. The budget amendment number three, I should have shouted that out. I'm terrible about skipping over something.
Where is it?
That must have been in the email for all of the students.
It is.
The nine of that?
I think it's a separate email.
It's a separate email, she sent the second.
It's the one today. So that's right, yes, yes.
FY '22?
FY '22, but I didn't put in the number three, yes. Ms. Williams, do you mind talking to us through that if you got, just I mean, we're talking about?
This is for our summer learn. It's for the transportation. Fortune is $24,035. The, in the summer learn camp is $7,547. And the bridge cost is $39,276. Eighty-eight in stream camp is $25,027. This is, um, this is a budgeting to our JPM.
I asked three, um, presidents, where is stream camp, any, where is that?
Um, is that?
That, that is the?
That one of the schools?
That's Ralph Askins, that's it. It's the thing that, uh.
Science, technology?
Yeah, it is, but I'm trying to, Chant, 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 teaching, it's her, it's her part of the camp. That's kind of a separate thing that they do, it's really pretty cool too.
Were the kids invited, like, did they have to score academically, you know? Like, were they like invited, invitational, like, if they had certain performance, you know what I mean, like a?
Talking about for the, that I do not know for, for the stream.
I, I don't know that there were prerequisites. I do think there was some type of a screening, but I'm not sure that there were prerequisites, so.
And these other two were asked at the office.
They're an S continue to stop.
Now, the summer school, anybody could do that, but now it's, that last one, I do not know what the criteria was.
Certainly, for the summer school, it was open to everyone and certain kids were invited, obviously.
You're somewhere encouraged to go to summer school.
Yeah.
Especially in middle school, we, we, I will say, Ms. Barnett beat the bushes pretty hard. They didn't have lots, show up, sign up, and she went person to person, she made individual calls. Now, I'm telling you, Ms. Brittany worked hard to get kids involved in summer school.
Well, it's not punitive, this is to help the student, it's really to help the student.
But it's, right, Ralph Askins, they love it. Middle school, look warm, and high school, they, they not there if it don't help them.
It's credit recovery, well, all right, it's credit recovery. So I, I do have a, a basic question. So I know science, technology, engineering, math, STEM, is where we started this journey. And then we've added art. And what is art?
Art is, where you see art?
S-T-R-E-A-M. So I get science, technology, engineering, math, I know art is the A. What's the R? I know of, and I hear of STEAM, this is, the reason I ask is that I hear of people using this acronym STEAM. What I don't know is stream. And that's my ignorance.
Well, it's mine, that I can't tell you what it is.
I mean, I would say reading, that reading is the obvious R there, right? But it's, I don't think that's what that is.
Science, technology, engineering, arts, and mathematics.
Yeah, so STEAM, I got that. What is the R?
Recede.
Let us go dead, recede.
Yeah, I've, I've never, I've just not understood what this R is. And we don't have to answer that tonight, but we do need to approve the budget amendment tonight. But, but I, I've always been.
Science, technology, reading, engineering, arts, and mathematics.
So it is.
That's it.
Super, thank you for answering.
Thank you.
So any other questions about the budget amendment? You said you had three questions.
Two were in one.
Okay.
It's a multi-layered question.
Love that one.
Any other, any other questions? Floor is open for a motion.
Open.
Got a motion to approve budget amendment number three. And a second. Further discussion? All in favor say aye. Anyone to oppose say no. Okay.
And that will go before the C level hall gets.
That's right.
So Danny would not need your help with that on his questions.
Um, and then we have three, and we're accustomed to these invoices that come in from our contractors on the FEMA project. One of them is for $19,336. The second one is for, let's see, we'll just take these individually. Invoice number seven, and again, this is, this is for the project management services and whatnot that they're providing. So I'll just go ahead, I don't do this very often. I'll make a motion, we approve invoice number seven for Broadest and Associates in the amount of $19,336. And I got, I hear a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Anyone to oppose? Okay, and I will make a motion that we also approve invoice number eight to Broadest and Associates for $19,336. And I got a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Anyone to oppose? And I will make a motion that we approve invoice number six for JBHM Architecture in the amount of $18,915.80 for their architectural services. And I got a second for that and further discussion. All in favor say aye. Anyone to oppose? Thank you. Those will also make their way back to the seat. Anything else financially? Anything else I skipped over? Insurance and policy.
We don't have anything right now, but we're going to meet June 21st.
Got it. Well done, Bridget. Mr. Hopkins, superintendent's report.
Yeah, and if you have any questions, we will direct this in a bin. But approval of the technology surplus list, that's just where we're going to try. And I, I will say, I'm pretty pleased with the way we're doing this. We're going to offer that to our students, some of the, so that they can take those, you know, to, they get your first shot at it.
They purchase them.
And how do we set a price?
Yeah, we, we have set a price, is that right, Ben?
Well, what we'll do on this, the other was what the buyout was for the lease.
Right.
On these, we'll get whatever, whatever our best offer is from vendor, from surplus vendors. And then whatever that is, it's what we'll offer to the others. That's, there we go. But these are Chromebooks that have reached what we call end of life, they get no more security updates and stuff. They still work, but they, as far as the way we use them, we can't have, you know.
Are they three years, five years, how old are they?
They're three plus years, yeah.
They're thirty-five, right?
Yeah, they're, they're over three years. We get all the goodie out of it.
So I would like to make a recommendation of approval of that list.
No more.
And a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Anyone to oppose? All right.
I have a few things here I'd like to add, just as, I guess, information. One is, we are looking at the possibility of adding daycare for our employees if it's feasible. I did talk to one of our employees earlier this week and she is actually going to do some of the research. We did talk about it at a supervisors' meeting today and we're actually even going to reach out maybe to some local daycares and offer our space for them to come in if we can't find enough. But it'd be a great benefit to some of our young parents that if they could drop their children off and then go straight to work. That would be good. So nothing official yet, but I do want you to know that that's in the works and I'll bring it to you when we have more information. But it is a need that we have and what we would do is if we didn't generate enough from our employees, we would then open it up to the public. I did, I've done this previously, basically we just draw the names out of a hat, they give them away in West and we just draw out.
And you're probably doing that on-site?
Oh, yes, yes. On, on our campus, in our building. We hopefully would like to do it at maybe Ralph Askins, if not, then that possibly conditions based at the middle school. But a lot of it's going to be dependent, we found that, again, I looked at it today, that it's dependent upon rules and regulations by daycares. So, but I will say, Ms. Dotson is actually making phone calls to daycares to discuss that. That's, that will come out of today.
Like birth to five, like what's the?
Oh, yes, we're talking about birth to, I guess, three or four.
So you can do it DOE or you can do it DHS if it's with kids, I won't try. But you can still do it six weeks to four or five years and it's still be DOE. You can also do birth to five or six and then how you might do it, it's still be DHS. If you do it DOE, it'll be a little bit easier, DHS is a lot more, it's a lot more rules that you have to go through. But the quickest way would be DOE, but there's stricter rules for DHS.
Yeah, I, I would, as I talk, I'm not fluent in that language, but I do know that it's a great benefit, you know? You know, saying about, I feel D U and B, you know? But, but anyway, we are looking into it, if you hear people talking about it. All right, the other part is, now, so I'll keep you updated. The, we're not automatically coming about our supervisors and our principals. I know y'all feel this way, but this is being recorded, so I always like to moralize this. You know, there's a misconception, so it's, oh, it's summertime. You know, I, I can assure you, this is probably the busiest time for our administrators and our supervisors and coordinators. We, we are working very, or they are working very hard. And as you can see, the plans they're putting into getting things ready for the upcoming year. So I just want you to know that you're getting your money's worth out of all of those employees. They are working very hard, I can assure you of that. And the last thing is, just a personal thing, thank you so much for your confidence in the contract and all this and all those things. And I hope to continue to earn your trust and your confidence. It doesn't go unnoticed by myself or my family and we're very happy. And I hope I continue to make the children a favorite city schools act. Y'all are just about right.
We are. Good, well, thank you. Of course, having now finished out the evaluation period, we'll have a new performance period that begins July 1st for Mr. Hopkins for the next 12 months. And so my proposal, we, we talked about this briefly at the work session, but my proposal would be to stick with the, it's a fairly comprehensive evaluation instrument we're using these days. I, I asked about any inputs, I haven't gotten any, so I take it you're all satisfied with it. So I make a motion that we approve that evaluation instrument. The beauty is, you'll have a full year this year to, to know what's coming, right? These are the big factors you'll be evaluating, you know? But I think it's a really good, we spent some time a couple of years ago, really drastically changed it, I think it, I think it was. So I would make a motion that we approve that evaluation instrument for the coming year. A second. All in favor say aye. Anyone to oppose, say no. Great. And just two, two last things as we close out. I appreciate the focus on the school safety plans and I would ask you to include, I know you have weekly and practically daily meetings with all the administrators and whatnot, but as we, you know, we're not gearing up for fall with students in the building, we have students in the building right now and so through the summer. So just a review and reevaluation of those school safety plans. We, I think, we really appreciate it.
Is the SRO at high school and middle school during this summer?
They, they are.
I know, I was asking.
But they are, they're, they're in and out, yes. Because really, there's not a lot of students there at the high school all, all day, they're just there just in the first part. I will say, we've already, in our meeting this morning, we discussed the, how we're going to make sure that there's the back door. I think pretty much all of you know about, it goes to the portables and all that. It is no longer going to be an option to keep that open, it's going to be locked and, you know, it's going to take someone to manually go out and open it between classes, but that's what we're going to do, we're going to lock that. We've also talked to Megan about the cafeteria and some of those things. So, we should have all doors, one entrance really that you can come in or out.
And, and just because not everybody has been on board this whole time, just, just to, as a reminder, if you have members of the public who are asking about, well, what is the school's plan for safety or protection or whatever? That's actually one of the things the school system is allowing under law to keep, right? Because as you can imagine, you don't really need that plan out in the public of specifically, what is the school going to do in the event of a, of an emergency situation? So, board can know and discuss, but that's not something, if you were to get a request, just please make sure they understand that for the safety of the staff and students there, we don't release that and that is, that is acceptable and actually that's a pull-on that protects us there to, to protect the students.
Absolutely, and if you have any questions, they're welcome to call. I actually met with a gentleman and talked to him and then, kind of referring to Mr. Jones who called him, a very wonderful, caring citizen, an elderly gentleman, former Marine, that had some concerns in not just Fayetteville City Schools, but of all schools in general, and I thought that went very well. We do have things for our doors to lock and we're working continuously on those for us classes and doors. But I will say, historically, y'all, I mean, having three SROs for three buildings is really nice at Fayetteville City Schools. Y'all, the people really need to know how blessed that is. That is really a seven point.
Well, and that's another thing where our city government cooperates with the school.
Absolutely.
And we know what very things to do.
Well, tradition, all the things we have just completed, I mean, that is...
Safety.
Yeah, as a parent, I'm glad we have that extra land protection to the doors now and speak.
Yep, yep, good. Our next board meeting is scheduled for July 4th, so I assume that you'd like to reschedule. What do you think about Tuesday the 5th? Or Monday the 11th?
Are you going to New York?
Are we going this summer? I'm okay with either, so.
How about, how about Monday the 11th? Is that okay with you guys? Okay. You be back?
No.
All right, so let's go ahead and say Monday 11th, July 5:00 PM will be our July board meeting. Any final thoughts? Comments? We stand in charge, that's all.